All right, do we have any public comments? Bonnie was here earlier, I don't want to just come back.
Nobody who.
Anybody on Zoom who wants to speak to the public? All right, so next on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the January 10th Board of Education meeting.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'm even at it. It listed me as present and I was absent.
Thank you. And I think it's supposed to be Candace was on Zoom too, I can't.
I was on. Most people were on Zoom that night, it was quiet, the majority.
Yeah.
Yes.
Hi, Eric is on if you can see me.
We were just debating whether or not you were gonna join us from the road.
I'm still in the car, so I'll keep it on mute for now, but I should be able to join in a little while by video.
Do you have anything to edit on the minutes?
No.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Bye.
Bye. All those opposed? And any abstaining? All right, next we have Mr. Siri with us tonight for his selectmen's report.
Thank you. I'll bring up to date on COVID, just before I left the office today, we got the daily update. We're down to just a little over 11% of positive testing compared to almost 25 a little over a week ago. Or a week ago, nice thing to even better than that is how they were down to 500 from where they were. In the 2077, we were really close to 2000, so we've had some positive news there from Ledlight. And the state regarding kids, we had a drive through yesterday at the middle school. Starting at 8:30. Had about 11, a little over 1,000 kids to hand out and the track was steady, but there was no lines. I mean, it moved very.
That's good.
Moved through and about a little before 10:30, we were down and we ran out and I think one person moved in line. The last person, we ran out of kit, so, but we made arrangements for that person for today. We've also got a large delivery to Jeff, you know, the governor has said we had to prioritize some mandates. So we're delivering some kits over the next couple of days to La Jolla, Twin Havens, our 55 plus community. And those known to be at risk as well as they simply have to prioritize also the unlicensed daycare, which is hard because if they're unlicensed, we really don't know that they're there, but if we try to. We'll do what we can to take care of them. And also if anybody feels indeed that they really need a kit, that they know the kit, that they know someone who is at risk or they're at risk. Contact Julie Wilson at Emergency Management, I'll even give her number, it's obviously 860. This is their work number now. 860-739-4434, because if people are, you know, really in the need for a mask and they can't get one or whatever. We're going to make them available by appointment or by previous arrangement at either senior center or parts of, but again, that has to be arranged ahead of time. We've done the mask handout at the town hall, we've probably gone several thousand for different people too. For members of the household that are, you know, within age of 12, that worked out really well. So I think that covers COVID and I think if none of us ever hear that word again, it'll be too soon. You know, something that, you know, obviously Jeff, I know that.
Yeah.
Occupied all our lives over the last two years and the last few weeks of the Omicron. Moving on to Public Safety Building, our dispatch is in, it's working fine. Police are slowly moving in, starting the middle of this week. We hope to be fully have them in there by the end of the month and lock up our operational by probably middle of next month. The roof is done and even with the last rainstorm we had last week when we saw significant flooding. There's no problems at all regarding the flooding, as we all saw, if you lived in Crescent Beach, Oak Grove Beach or. Sunny Point, you would have, depending on where you were, you would have had a lot of water, but as soon as the tide went out. The water receded, our town crew had the, had a whole plan in place to get everything done and cleaned up in a really good time because the concern was even though it was brackish water. Icing up as the night progressed and they did a really good job doing that. Stay down along the beachfront, the Amtrak fence is going to be replaced between late February and mid-April. We are not really thrilled with the fence that they have selected, so they, Dave Collins from the day did an article from the Stony Park fence that would be. The long rails will not be bent over and if you're sitting in a place like Skippers or walking along the beach or along Main Street more. And you want to look over from Cooks, that would really be a view of structure, so we're going to see if we can get that changed. We're hoping we can, but yeah, that is, we're going to be replacing it from the drawbridge, the train drawbridge up to home wall is where they're covering. So we'd like to try and maintain that. It's one of the longest stretches of unstructured view of Long Island and the ocean on the east coast, we want to keep that. So more of that, they're doing budget reviews right now, I am, and then next week the board, especially if we get the town budget. We'll be setting up our meetings for next month to review our budget and I know that the board of excitement would like to at least have a presentation, so I'll work with. Mr. Newton, he came up with a, a day that works for both of us. And I jokingly say this, expect to go before your board of finance this year because the board of excitement has three recent members of the board of finance on, so. Yeah, I'm sure they'll be very thorough and rightly so. Last thing, we have the American Rescue Plan Ad-Hoc Committee. We've got members of the, a couple of members of the public, members from the business committee, a member from 501(c) area. And two members of the board of finance, the board of select. They're meeting Thursdays and they hope to by mid-March have a recommendation for. For the board of select for the expenditure of the remaining 3.8 billion. Their advisory nature, the board of select is still going to decide that will be out of the board of finance meeting, but their advisory. And I told all department heads to get, be there ARP needs, not want, but need by next week, so that that's already to go with that. So that pretty much covers. Any questions, everybody?
Any questions for Kevin, Candace?
I don't have any questions, but thank you for the update and I do want to thank you publicly for opening that up for the American Rescue Funds for others to bring input. I thought that was really great.
And I think too with the 501(c), I had a couple of people said, no, you know, they said, I'm glad you didn't pick us because they had a, they were representative of a specific. 501(c), the individually, God, Pandy Woller is involved with 501(c), but Miracle League and Children's Examiner, neither one of those are going to ask for any ARP funds. I believe that's the perfect person to represent, so very good cross section of people on that, very good.
Anyone else have a question for Kevin? I do, I have a question about the Amtrak fence, are they going to work with the power company of moving those telephone poles out of the street?
I do not have an answer to that, but I'll get one for it.
Just because they literally are on the street.
Right. Yeah, I'm not sure.
I'm surprised they haven't been hit by a plow.
Okay.
And just every time I go by that one, I thought.
Yeah, I don't know, but I'll find out if that answers for you too.
I figured it would be a good time to work collaboratively to.
It would be because we can, you know, make our concerns known because, you know, I'm glad we saw the, the surveyors out there doing that because that kind of big day here. Because this is, this has been long delayed because COVID replaces the test stuff. There's no argument that needs to be replaced.
Yeah.
I'll find out the answer for you.
Thanks, Kevin. All right, Brendan and Lamont, welcome, welcome.
First off, I'd like to say good evening. Overall, it's been a free example of the very busy midterm information and tomorrow, so they started Wednesday and then Tuesday, tomorrow. And the third quarter is starting and currently right now there is a boys and girls basketball game.
Right now?
Yeah.
Playing right as we. So in other sports news, this weekend, there was a, there was a indoor track meet at UConn. I know a few people on the track team and all good things, we had a few state qualifiers. So that's always good to see my classmates and I guess other classes qualifying for those. High end meets. Other than that, some clubs have stopped meeting in person due to the Omicron variant. I do suspect that in-person meeting will resume soon, especially what Mr. Siri said earlier, COVID cases at the high school are increasing. So there's a lot of hope there for a non-COVID future.
I think so.
Well said.
I like your positivity. Anyone have any questions? Thank you guys. Thank you, if you guys don't have to say, you can.
Yeah.
Go study.
If you go study.
What's left? Or go watch the game.
Or watch the game. What you can say.
Thank you.
All right, Eastside Public Schools Superintendent's Budget.
All right, I thought it would be prudent because we have in years past, we've kind of missed it and overlooked it and we don't want to do that because last year we didn't, we were spot on. And this year we wanted to be as well with CIP, so I think we should start with capital. Mr. Lund is here via Zoom, so let's let him just do a review of capital and there has not been any meetings with the town as of yet on capital, just everybody's clear. But Mr. Lund, I'm going to turn it over to you and we'll kind of walk through the capital and everybody hopefully had a chance to kind of take a look at that. And Chris is here to answer any questions and we have a green screen, so.
We're not all green, you're just straight green.
That's okay.
Am I, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So if you'd like, I can do one or two things, I assume you may have the initial. List in front of you or I can share my screen, which would be preferred.
What would people prefer, do they have it in front of them or?
We don't.
Go, yeah, why don't you share, go ahead and share.
All right, see, make sure this works.
Yeah.
Okay, should have the spreadsheet up? Everybody see that? Okay. So what I've done with this year's plan is there's a whole lot in this and not all of it is necessarily for next year, but it's time to start talking about some of the things. So what you will find, say in the top 10, it really is continuation of what we started working on last year. You know, continuing with roofing at the high school, middle school, continuation of HVAC equipment at the high school and middle school. Second phases of door and window replacements at the high school and exterior work on the middle school, so that's the bulk of it. So none of that should have been a surprise for anybody who's on the board from last year. So what I have added in addition to that though are things that we really need to start talking about now. And talking with Mr. Newton, you know, he and I had, I had suggested him and he had a similar idea that we really need to have. A, okay, sorry, let me interrupt.
Okay, got you back, we lost you there for a second.
Okay, so what we really need to have is, or what I think it would be good to have.
He's on my screen too.
Am I dropping in and out?
Yeah, we have it out though.
Okay. How far back did you lose?
Mr. Newton and I.
Mr. Newton and I have been talking about a suggestion to have a ad hoc facility committee. As part of the board of head, so that can have some longer term discussions on some major work that really needs to be considered. To be done sometime in the next, call it decade. And what you will see is you look through the list and I'll go through those first and then I'll just come back and we can talk about any individual projects that are up here. But at the high school, a couple of things that have fallen into that are the auditorium, which, talking with Ms. Kelly. There's a lot of small, a lot of projects, bigger and smaller, that comprise that whole area. Carpeting, new chairs, the folding walls that would make those two wing areas in the classrooms. The stage, potentially some other issues related possibly to fire code. So there's a whole bunch of stuff that could be rolled into a major renovation of that space. That would just, first of all, updated, second of all, make it more efficient use of space. And the ability to do different things in there, one of the discussions that I've been having with a vendor was in those wing wall seating. What would it cost to take out those seats, many of which are broken already? And install seats with the flip up side desk and a USB port and a power port. So that we could have two additional classroom spaces, almost like the college lecture classroom spaces. And then of course, carpet shot and if we're doing the chairs, it's time to do the carpet and those sliding walls that were originally installed. Haven't, we try not to close those according to custodians because sometimes they don't open again. So there's a lot of work that can be done in there, so that would be a major project that I think bears some discussion. At the ad hoc level, the second thing that has arisen as well from the high school is again, to improve space would be suite 200 or make a suite 200 out of. The second floor area where there's some smaller rooms that by reconfiguring that space would make it much more functional for the needs that they have there. So again, something that would be looked at by a committee that would be prioritizing those things, I'm going to move down the list. To central office, central office, you've all been through the building, I know. And some of the things that I've dealt with in the last two years are sections of plaster ceiling that have been falling down. Almost hitting someone once and of course, other areas where we had to intervene early before it came from. We know we have electrical issues there, lack of enough power because of changing use. We have really what I wouldn't call much in the way of AC because it's all window units, stress fractures, it's not ADA compliant. A lot that would need to be done to make that a fully functional space for, you know, as part of a major. Evaluation of that space, maybe the building itself isn't the best place for us. So again, that would be something that would be best done in a, an ad hoc committee that could be looking at those types of things. Or a standing subcommittee.
We just, then last. Central office too, just want to add that our, our windows are still on rope pulley systems as well to go up and down, yes, it's, it's a classic, but.
Those windows that open.
Rope and pulley.
Yeah, those windows that open.
Those that open, yes.
And then the last item in that evaluation type committee realm that I put on there is bus depot. We had discussions with that row in the year, just remind everyone or to inform some, everyone for the first time that when that bus depot was placed where it is, it was a temporary solution to an issue. And it is sitting in the aquifer zone or adjacent to the wetlands. The planning office at town has raised questions about, you know, when are we going to come up with the permanent solution? So that is another thing, so a couple of those note one issues, dollar value associated with those would just be. I think at the time, if we chose to go forward with the plan would be to bring in outside help to do that. Before I scroll back up or as I scroll back up, or one note two item, of course, the bull roof, which wouldn't be necessarily a CIP issue, but. Because it's being funded elsewhere, but this was the best place for it to be. Accounted for for next year.
I'm sorry, the roof or what?
The pool, the pool roof.
Right. Different scenarios with that, which scenario are we on currently?
We're going to bring the company back, I think February 7th, Chris?
That's the, that's the plan and I've been working with one of the local building companies, that's a licensed Butler, which is a standing seam, standing metal building. One of the major producers of those, so they're local representative, I've been talking to. And we're trying to get as requested a replacement cost for the roof for that meeting, so we can come in and say, you know, here is our one or two ideas for potential repair. And here is the anticipated cost for a complete re-roofing and proceed, and we'll figure out where we want to proceed from there. That'll be at that next meeting.
Thank you.
So. And then just quickly returning to the top again, oh, but you see, as mentioned, we're the air handling systems, exterior windows and doors at the high school. Repaving the senior parking lot. Scrolling down again to the middle school, air handlers, the roof footwork will continue. One addition to this list that was on there last year was the elevator and the main hydraulic piston in the elevator needs to be replaced, so. That is something that really needs to be done within the next year or two. It's slowly leaking. We captured the hydraulic oil. And it's. One of those systems that it's become obsolete as well, so we're almost running out of spare parts to replace what we have. So that would be something that we look to have done, not this summer, but the following summer. And of course, remind everybody or again, for newer members, what you see with the capital budgets typically are. We get approval for work this year that will be done in the following summer. Because we'll do design, we'll do planning, we'll do the coordination, the bid processing, the contracting, which takes quite a bit of time. And we have a short construction window, so this would be, you know, everything has at least more or less a year lag on this, except for second phases. Some of that would be work that we've already designed this year and we'll be going out to bid either this year or closer to summer, so that. We can get a contracted, awarded and done before school comes back this fall. So just to want everyone to have that in back of their mind that this is mostly work that would be done a summer from now. And one last item, also I am putting together the same book is last year, just updating it and adding the additional projects. So each page will have its. Individual project sheet called out some pictures and in the cases of where I have designs already back from the contractor or the engineers and architects. I'll have some of those included as well, so I know we're not voting on this tonight, but before you do have to get to the point where you're voting on it, you'll have a good package of information with lots of pictures that will answer any questions.
I have to say that those pictures, that book that you put together for us last year was phenomenal, it helped a lot.
So I'm just replicating that, Jane, this year. And other than that. You know, we can talk individual projects, I think that probably be better at other time, but I'm willing to answer any questions that anyone might have on what's up now.
So Chris, I'm imagining that you're looking at safety, ADA compliance. Environmental issues as you prioritize, is that correct or how are you looking at like the ceiling falling in, obviously those kinds of things. So are you going to be your first to, to knock off, right?
I'm trying to balance everything as much as possible. Yeah, obviously the, anything that's really a short-term safety issue, we won't, for example, we'll go back to the central office. So we knew we had an area that had a problem with it, we fixed that area, knowing that we couldn't do the entire building. We're now doing inspections every month of all the above ceiling spaces, so we can look above the acoustic tiles. So we'll continue to ensure that the building's safe until we can get to it. But again, that's probably something that's going to need to be talked about because it would be best done as a major project. Whereas what some of the other projects you see on here are roofs, middle school roofs, I really would like to get to those, get that seal on it. Which will buy us the number of additional years at a lower cost, we do have some minor water infiltration there. So we want to also deal with that before it becomes major infiltration. So trying to be proactive there and then when it comes to, as you mentioned, the environmental systems. We do have 20-year plus equipment on the roof set both high school and middle school. And trying to. Get that out in a planned process before anything fails prematurely or in some cases, since I'm looking at doing that over five to 10 years. Which would be about the end of normal service life or just beyond getting everything taken care of just as needed to be the ideal. So it's, it's a little bit of everything, I guess.
Yeah, I know, that makes sense. And then the other thing is I heard the initial design for the, for the swimming pool was that there would be a separate senior, by senior, I mean 55 and older population for dressing. That was part of the design when it was first presented. Could that be part of what goes on with the roof, is that something that could be added on or is that something that's totally not possible? And then the second thing is that the auditorium, I've heard parents and graduates along talk about lack of space for changing. You know, they have to quick changes from one role to the next, if there would be more opportunities to build that up somehow.
To answer all of that, so I think first of all, that the locker rooms would be a separate issue from the roof. I think there'd be different costs, now one thing that I don't have on here, which would be sort of the second or third priority at the high school as a major project. Is the athletic wing. And not the south gym or the north gym, but everything in between and the locker rooms, so that would probably be a place where the, where that 55 and older space would be addressed. So that again, would be a longer term, I think, plan.
My understanding was that it would be, I'm not sure what direction that is, south perhaps, so at the outside where the parking lot is. So the senior, the 55 and older population would have to come through the door and then go through so that they would actually integrate or communicate with the students for the student's safety. Just to have that separation of ages with spaces.
You're talking like an add-on to the building.
That was the original design of it that.
Yeah, there's, there's some design, yeah, about six years ago, I think there was some design.
This was the original, so back in 96.
Oh, you're talking, okay, since then, there's been other.
Oh, okay.
Other designs as well that just didn't go anywhere because of the cost, but not that they can't come up for conversation.
Okay, okay. I just need a conversation to have.
Yeah, and I, again, I think that's really closely related more to the work that we would be doing on the. The athletic wing as a whole, instead of the roof, I think the roof really just shouldn't stand alone. Because the source of funding and the various trades that would be associated with that, it'd basically just be a roofer to add any additional space. You would be bringing in different trades, carpenters, masons, electricians, whatnot. So I would look at that separately. And then just really quickly to circle back to the auditorium. That, that statement actually was in the back of our minds and one of the thoughts we had would be to add space right out the. The back wall of the stage, because there's that area between the building itself and the parking lot. And then again, maybe just adding a changing room or two, you know, male and female. And then also room for props, because the prop space right now is in a mechanical room, which I had to separate. Made some changes to ensure that we're in compliance or as closely in compliance to fire code as possible, because you're really not supposed to have anything planable in a mechanical space. So yeah, there's, there's a lot of work that could be done and again, that would be something I think that would be best addressed with the. A committee of some size of interested persons.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Chris?
We should bring that up at the next meeting too, February 7th, about an ad hoc.
Yep, I was going to say, when I first came on the board, we had one, it was called building the grounds. But we met at 2 o'clock and it was painful to get out of work at 2 o'clock for a lot of people. But then when we redid the committees, we got rid of it. But I think it's a good idea to bring it back.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, definitely, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Erica Bennett, we'll put that on the agenda for next meeting.
Thanks, Chris.
You're welcome. Appreciate it, Chris.
Stop sharing then.
So with that, that's capital. I put my update, you know, if you had any, you know. Budget related questions, feel free to send over, we didn't receive, you know, any. For the weekend, but we'll open it up for obviously for conversation, no decision making needs to happen, you know, obviously tonight. It's just open discussion dialogue and then our next meeting is February seventh, and we'll continue discussions there. And go from there.
Does anyone have any questions for Jeff? Barry?
I have two questions, first, I went through the budget book. For the for the S R fund section, we have a grant thing. And there's a section for the. Invested plan A R P as S R. Back in November, we communicated and the law came out with the offer to basically give twenty thousand dollars for the school district for. Separate voice project. We talked about that. I was trying to figure out, I was looking through the A R P S R listing in there, and I couldn't find that twenty thousand dollars.
I remember you mentioned that a while, but I sent an email about that, but I never saw that, Barry. There was a special, there was a special ed. There was a special ed grant that we additional money.
Special grant that came out of the governor's workforce council, it was. To summarize, it was an opportunity for, it was a student initiated activity where the students could say. Here's, we like to use some of this fund because here's how we would like to have. This component to our education experience, whether it's more technology, whatever. Different form out of classes, whatever, when the students could write up. A proposal was basically being voted on by all the students, the one that got approved was sent to the state department and. Was approved and the twenty thousand was gonna be coming back.
Yeah, I remember you mentioned that.
Yeah, I remember it was mentioned, but I didn't think that it was.
I never saw anything come forward, was it being discussed, or was it a?
I'm looking at the listing now, so there was an, I think, Davis is on the line, so there was a special Ed Steichen grant of twenty thousand dollars. That I I need to add on here, I missed, but I don't know if it's.
Yes, there is something called like, you know, the the voice, the student voice.
No, that's not what it was.
They sent you the, when we communicated, they sent you the lease on it.
You did, and I looked for it, but I never found anything, Barry, there was nothing that ever came, it would have been too, if it was, if it was a grant, it would have come through our system. E grants, but it never was there.
I don't see anything like I said, that only twenty thousand dollars that we have is that special.
And that's the one I thought that maybe you were thinking of or referencing.
It's actually very, it was part of the effort. To use the S R funds.
Yeah. Yeah, which makes sense, it makes total sense, but we never saw it. I know, I haven't heard of any other district talk about it either, nobody has ever brought that up. Maybe it didn't come out yet?
One of the things, I know there were over a hundred districts that applied for.
We never saw it in E grants. It would have had to have come through E grants too.
The thing that I, the thing I sent you just had, it had all the links and information on it. If I kind of applied for it and so forth.
Okay, well, we'll go back and take a look at it, I don't know if it's, but again.
Voice for change, Barry?
Yeah.
We found this, so I found some information on it. And I I I cannot, I did find, I just looked it up and found some information on it, and my my initial look at it, it, I don't know if it's access to. Oh, here, yeah, students from the participating schools will submit proposals to the C S D E outlining how they propose to spend twenty thousand dollars in their school. Aligned to A R P, but it it, I feel as though the districts were already determined because it says forty three districts encompassing seventy seven high schools. Across Connecticut have opted in to participate.
Maybe they were selected.
And that was back in November.
I think it was. When the first thing, that was the thing I was kind of, because I saw it. There was an old thing opted in, and that's why I sent it, this is something we should look at and opt in on.
Yeah.
That was, the email extended.
Yeah, we didn't do it, so we can look further to see, I don't know if it's still in availability, but. It didn't come through, we were, we've been running everything through A R P and S R, so.
East line is not eligible, I just found it on the state website, and it says this. So how do I know if I'm eligible to participate, it's a frequently asked question. And then it says, one, you must be a current high school student and the district and school must be listed on the participating districts page, so when I click on that. I don't see East line listed on.
So I think the district had opted in on it first to get on that list. And then the students could provide that that question was for the student application. Students could say, you know, some of my district is on the, you know, as I understood it, when I. Within the discussions up there at the workforce council, you know, if the invitation went out to schools, the schools opted in, so we didn't opt in.
I don't think we were eligible.
I do.
Usually, if we're eligible, they would send us more information, it would have been an A R P S R as an eligibility. It hasn't been in there.
Send you the link, it doesn't appear that we were eligible, it seems like it's pretty, as I read the frequently asked question. Only those schools listed on our website can participate in this year's challenge, this year's challenge.
I think that's.
Apologize for any inconvenience, please know we are in some other opportunities.
Thank you, guys.
My impression was that we could, we had the choice a lot, that's why I sent it.
Okay, well, yeah, yeah, I appreciate you sending.
Anyone else have any questions for Jeff? You have another?
We're also going through, do we still have, like, on the budget, as I understand, we're cutting three teaching positions?
As of right now, at the middle school, there's three position, yes, we're still working to repurpose, it's still early. But we were able to repurpose two, or we're looking to see if we could potentially repurpose other ones, if more people retired too, through attrition. Right now, we only have one point five retirees across the entire district, certified staff wise.
I was kind of looking through the budget. And on the question of are there other, you know, larger ones, are there things that we're doing? That we could take money from and put into the teaching position, because I think that. Teachers come with us through this whole pandemic thing, and I. I just don't think that we should be in a position, becoming a position.
Yeah, we were based off the enrollment, though, remember the the Kiva enrollments there, if if we didn't do that, you'd have. Seventeen, eighteen kids in grade seven and eight in class.
If we got three extra teachers. I mean, there are things we could do with three extra teachers. You know, that not necessarily are involved in teaching a class on Kiva.
At the middle school, you're talking specifically.
Middle school or even.
Yeah, certi- if certifications aligned. Their certification has to align to specific.
But just for an example, you know, just I'm really interested too in the fact that. We know that pandemic is not gonna go away, it's gonna come back. And I want a plan so that when it comes back, we are gonna be ready for it this time. So. An out there idea, we have three extra teachers. We could put them, we have this reimagining project. We could set up a pilot issue to say, how would we reimagine a component of middle school? To prepare us much better, you know, by initiative or the pandemic, whatever these services. So we had the kind of stuff, you know, maybe that's.
Kind of rethinking, repurposing, yeah.
We have three teachers, there are things we could do with them. You know, not necessarily teaching a class with extra. Now, to keep the funding for them. The thought I have, but I don't have access to all this information. But if we could look at the rest of the budget. And to say, are there things that we're not getting a fullback for a buck on? That could be used to support these teachers? And then you. There are many things in there, one of the things that I was able to see was the fact that we have. We're paying fifty thousand for Project Though. I know our past discussions of Project Though. Were the fact that it's kind of coming into the system, and it's a law safe fair thing where. The books will say to the teachers, you can use it, you can use it, whatever, and it's. Something that is there, it's a nice to have. So, you know, there are questions like that fifty thousand dollars, could we take it? From that issue and put it over to make sure we could keep teachers on staff and repurpose what they're doing. In a very creative way, to help us deal with the fact. So many things we have to do. They repurpose them, they may not teach them the Kiva class, but to do something that helps the district go forward in a very. Proactive in a way, so whatever. I always suggested that before we go into cutting out teacher positions. Take a hard book and other items in the budget. That might not be returning a value that we're paying for them. The only thing I saw was a fifty thousand dollars on Project Though. There are other things, we could take things that we're already doing. Bring them over, one of those teachers, because I have. All in favor of not cutting off the teacher position because of what teachers have done against the pandemic.
Agreed, I one hundred percent agree with you in saving, we've talked a lot about that, trying to save, you know, people, we don't want to see anybody lose their their job for sure. There's where that repurposing comes in, you have three teachers, it's roughly a hundred and eighty to almost two hundred thousand dollars. So it's, you know, Project Though was something that came up a couple of years ago, and yeah, it comes up every couple of years, and the feeling each time has been. We don't, we don't want to lose it, but there's, there might be other examples like that. That we can, we'll continue to, that's what we've been trying to do to get the number down too, and that's where we got it to the four point five nine. But we were trying to balance that enrollment component as well, but. Yeah, maybe there's some some additional repurposing barrier or other things, we just have to watch the certification component too. To make sure that they're working under their direct certification. But, could be talked about. So we can keep looking. If you see, if, yeah, if you see things too, you know, in the budget, like you brought up cave at one point, Project Though, there's other things that, you know. You know, look at, we're happy to look at them.
I'm gonna add cave to that list too, but that's not, I did it, I got.
I I know, I just use that as as an example, as an example. But, yeah.
Since the early nineteen eighties, so I do.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, there's the.
Yes, can you speak to the third grade class specifically at Flanders, there seems to be a tremendous amount of. Conversation revolving around that, I just kind of want you to have some clarification.
Yep, we we went through and talked about with the elementaries, and in your slide deck. That, you know, we put in specifically the the class size guidelines. You know, third grade sits at that twenty mark and not going over, you know, twenty students. Our our focus really needed to be when we talk class sizes at the elementary around Lily B. Haynes, we really struggled. With Lily B. Haynes and the number of specialty area students that are in. Part of those classes, so we needed to really keep, you know, that's from staff, from parents as well over there, we need to keep those numbers as low as possible. But at Flanders, it's sitting at twenty point six seven, you know, for next year, so average, it's right on that line. We don't know what kindergarten's gonna bring yet, so there might be, you know, an opportunity, maybe, you know, if we we have projected three or planned three kindergarten teachers. Maybe we don't need three, we might need four, I I don't know, so that could be an avenue to where there could be some shifting, but. It's a it's a it's a tough call, you know, it's a right, it's right on that line, you know, and I do understand and if. Respect, you know, all the the points of view that are coming from, that is that, that is a group of students that really struggle.
Well, that's what I wanted to kind of talk about too.
So, yeah.
Because, you know.
So that's out there.
We made a commitment on class sizes and rightfully so for many reasons, right?
Agreed.
You know, put forward by me, I remember actually putting it forward where others at times were, geez, you know, I don't know what, I don't want to lock myself in. Right to that commitment, but we did that for a reason, because as a district, I felt like everybody kind of. Was giving their input that that was the most beneficial thing to do, that that's something that we hold very dear here. So with that specific class, it made me who to take a look at. I don't know how to, how to add additional supports if needed, because it is, I think, a recognized. May cohort don't really know how to say that, but that little class has struggled. And it it might just not be the best thing. I do value the input that's coming in, I know that in the end, the best decision will be made, and I know that things are going to change. A tremendous amount, I always know that, I always feel like with rentals and moves and all these different things and people coming in, I mean, our numbers change literally as we're going into. The fall of the year, so. I thank everybody for always putting kids first.
We should keep it on the table and continue to to monitor it and, you know, maybe bring it back up before the board of it approves the final budget. It is something that we can resurface again for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anyone else have any questions for Jeff? Eric, do you have any questions for Jeff? I forgot Eric.
Thank you, no.
Is it traffic somewhere?
You're on good, thank you.
No one else has any questions? Kate?
Good, thank you, thank you.
Lisa, Lee, Barry, do you have any more questions?
And if you think of it, definitely, something else comes up, or more, shoot them over our way, we can, you know, we're gonna continue to monitor, you know, the numbers. And we'll, again, we'll go back around the table on February seventh for continued discussions.
All right, budget transfers.
All right, Marianne, do you want to talk through those? Just trying to keep on pace here to make sure we're bringing them to you, so we don't get that large, we just have that large group. Yeah, at the end of the year, all those transfers, so.
I mean, I think I've got about the problem, I had those three along, so. The first one is.
Get NC salaries and.
So the first one is the sub school psychologist at Nyanic Center, so for the beginning part of the year, we didn't put behind anyone. So Kim had to contract out, so there is someone in place now, so there's a balance in that line, I'm transferring it over to help. In the into Kim's people services account to help offset the cost of what you have to pay the vendor. The second one is the phys ed teacher at Lily B. Haynes, that person is out, so we're paying a long term sub. A long term sub that's charged with different line items, so just taking whatever balances in that Lily B. Haynes line and just maybe get over to. The long term sub account to help offset. This is there, and then the last one is, I think you guys are all aware, this one had a date on that, the mold issue. On Lily B. Haynes, so this account is obviously over, I'm taking it from pension only because we will have a. Surplus in that line, the amount that was estimated by the actuaries last year based on. Different assumptions that the pension committee made, they changed some assumptions in the market, the market value of the assets was greater, so. Our contribution was significantly less, that is paid for, so we're done with that, so we will, we have enough money in that line to more than cover that thirty nine thousand dollar transfer. If anyone has any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the line. Item transfers as described.
Thank you.
Say again?
Any further discussion? No, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Passes unanimously? Thank you, everyone. All right, the next one up is policy. So, I know I spoke last time, I'm so grateful for Lisa and Jill, we did a lot of policies at our last meeting, as you will see tonight. So we have three separate line items for review, the first discussion, A, is policies that are recommended for review. By the policy committee. You'll see. Policy and regulation ten ten non discrimination. Policy twelve fifty one school visitors, policy thirteen twenty four solicitation.
Policy twelve fifty one, school visitors. Policy thirteen twenty four, solicitation of funds. Policy thirteen thirty one, smoking and policy sixteen hundred prohibition of firearms. I'm just gonna put in a reminder that regulations we review, we do not vote on. Because they are how the administration implements the policies that we give them. So this is a first reading of those recommended policies to review. If anyone has any questions, I'll move on to the next group.
I'm running across this question.
Go ahead and check around understanding. So when I was taking a look at these, there are some that have, I think, S D A shipment.
Yep.
Um edits and then others did not. Can you tell me that?
Some of them, we are taking their complete policy and some of them, we are editing.
Got it.
This policy ten ten?
Yep.
It just seems so wordy and couldn't we shrink it up and we're expected to.
Oh, I just did a big thing.
I don't know.
Some of it, we, most of it, we cannot. Cause most of it is definitions that we have to have in there.
Attorney.
And the other one is the C H R O stuff that has to be in there and the reporting stuff that has to be in there. So if it could have come out, it would have come out. Is basically what that policy is. The, this policy is so full of mandatory definitions and mandatory verbiage that we really can't touch anything in it. We have to have the reporters. We have to have the C H R O and equal opportunity stuff.
No, I'm more concerned about race, religion, color, national origin, ancestry, alien.
That's mandated mandatory definitions that have to be in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then it's repeated.
Yep.
Yeah.
Why couldn't we just say if the complaint involves allegation or discrimination or harassment of the above or.
I would say, talk to your state and federal legislators on changing their verbiage.
And good, these are all the recommendation from the shipment, the law firm as well. I really wouldn't deviate, especially something of this nature.
Well, on this one, you can't because it's state and federal language. You have to have it in there.
Um, model smoking policy, um. I don't know if it's an issue, I, you know, smoking. Like some places deal with tobacco. It's chewing tobacco and that's not a concern here.
It is, it is, yup. Were you saying that it's?
Just I'm wondering, you know, we're saying prohibition against smoking. Other places I know kids like to chew tobacco. Maybe that's not a, a problem here for your kids are doing that, but I know in other parts of the state.
It is, but I think that is, that's in the student policies.
The five thousand series?
Yeah, that's the five thousand students. This is just one thousand public.
Community.
Policy, commit, community use policy.
Okay. And then the next one, uh policy regarding visitors and observations. Um, I'm wondering if we could include or have something that would be background checks or something like that for the safety sake of our kids and faculty?
We do. We already have that. Yeah, we have it in another area. Yup, D C F check, yup.
And there's no way to shrink these so that they're not redundant? No, not really.
Yeah, we would not touch the layout.
Okay. Fundraising, I like that one. I like being on a board where I don't have to fundraise. I don't like.
Like, these are first reads.
Yup.
Two.
First raise. Possession of deadly, deadly weapons. I know that we had had that months to man action group come and talk to us. Is this kind of in response to some of that communication?
No, this is the response to state and federal guidelines.
Because there was some talk of some mandatory requirement that we would have a policy that would address storage of firearms, separate storage of ammunition and having just a conversation about, you know, being safe. You know, if you wanna live by the second amendment and have the right to bear arms, but do it with good ideas and prudent stuff. Don't do it willy nilly, be careful.
This is not that policy. This is, this is weapons on school grounds.
Yeah, I don't think we were getting.
Well, we just had a really big case for us at Ohio, Michigan. We're just living in a dangerous scary world right now.
Does anyone else have questions about the first reading on that first group? All right, the second group is, these are new policies that are suggested. Um, sex offenders on school property, green cleaning programs, security and safety plan, pesticide application on school property, volunteers and automated, automatic external. I can't say defibrillators. I have a hard time with the role.
Don't we have the defibrillators?
We do, we just never had a policy on the storage use.
Yeah.
So. These are all brand new. We have not had any of these policies. These are all new coming at us. These are all pulled from. Right, anyone have any questions on those new ones? Then the next one are deletions. Um, these are things that are duplications of, I'll say duplication of services. They're things that have been, you'll see in other policies. There are things that we are not mandated by state, federal or town charter to have as a policy. Um, and like, and like you said, they're duplication of services. So it's policy one hundred, policy eleven hundred, policy eleven twelve, policy eleven twenty, policy eleven forty, policy twelve hundred, policy twelve ten, policy twelve fifty one, policy thirteen twenty two, policy thirteen forty, policy thirteen fifty, policy thirteen sixty, policy fifteen hundred and policy sixteen sixty. And again, these are two readings, so thirty days, they'll be up for approval. And then even if you have any comments or questions or suggestions, please get them into the policy committee or.
And a lot of those are nineteen ninety four policies, nineteen ninety three, ninety nine, all old and outdated policies that need to need to go or in or elsewhere.
Or they are elsewhere. A lot of these are elsewhere. Barry?
I should have gone to policy that is not, that was discussed at the policy meeting.
Okay, which policy?
Many of these meetings, I raised the same point about the district. I get confused about what is our outcome? What is the four one reason or two one and are we doing everything? And uh there, we use a lot of different words, uh like learning the whole thing here. Kind of executive coaching skills, social skills, S E L competencies. There are many, many different words. And it leads to some uh diffusion of that. When I was listening in to the policy committee meeting and it's hard to listen in, like it can't be part of the discussion. One of the things I kept saying to myself, when you were reviewing the policies, there was always the, the witness test on the policy, always come back to what the lawyers were saying. Statutes, legal aspects, whatever, which is appropriate. But also, if I don't mind running that through, what is the impact if we put this policy in place? How is it going to help to promote the academic growth and development of students? That was kind of an implicit thing here, but it was never explicitly stated. And it, so that was one question that I was thinking about, like, you know, as the reviewing policies on the policy committee. Would it be possible to just like add a little witness test on the policies to say, if this policy is approved, how is it going to promote the academic growth and development of students? And then having that, there would have to be a discussion of what is fed by the academic growth and development of students to the district. And so that's something that's, and example of that, that's why thirteen twelve came fine because you didn't put this, but that is not a complaint, you know, and what it does, it's a, this is a very, very good process. So that if a parent has a complaint about something for adults to go through a chain of command. He goes to the teacher, whatever, he draws things. And it talks about the process that it's going to go through. There's not a witness test in there is to say, what is the deciding factor on how this complaint is resolved in terms of the academic growth and development of the students as well? Give you an example of how I saw that play out. The fact through the pandemic, um, there's a hole, this parent came very excited by this. Um, son has a Monday or Tuesday, uh computer crash. And I got on the best bike, I quit getting a computer. Wednesday, got the computer on Wednesday, Thursday it was a snowstorm. Uh, lost power for a day, then Friday everything came up, whatever, finish this night homework, whatever, and put it into the portal to be submitted. Next, uh Wednesday, mother gets a note from the teacher to say, your son has five zeros for last week because it's not homework, never came in. And so she went out, she said, well, no worries. It was in because within the computer, there was a different way to submit it to uh Google Classroom. And so the parent said, you know, it's not that he didn't do it, he just didn't push the button to get it in there. And the teacher defaulted back, so here's a complaint from the parent going in. And it started going to the resolution of the policy, which says first level is the teacher. Now, the question is like, what is, under that policy, what is the witness test the teacher uses to resolve that? What the teacher used was the default to cumulative grade. It said the policy is that it didn't get here on Friday, all zeros. You know, which is spare the rod, spoil the child, you know, philosophy or whatever. So the witness test was the best academic growth development this suit was spare the rod, spoil the child, do all zero without having it. Here are two one end purpose is to develop students of responsible decision making, uh self responsibility, things like that, as it's in S E L. The teacher would come back and say, let's have a discussion of students. What could you have done better in the future to basically monitor your own stuff? Could you have checked that? You know, uh, and basically it's a teaching moment to develop, if our outcome is student responsibility. The complaint issue, the complaint policy should, could have a witness test in it, the complaint to resolve to the best academic growth and development of students.
I, I see what you're saying, but not every decision that the Board of Education makes is the academic growth of a student. Some things that we make decisions on are for the best fiscal responsibility of the town.
So there are a number that when students are involved, that witness test could be inserted.
You're, you're right. And I'm gonna say that, that you are correct. And I know that, I'm gonna say that we tabled this policy because the administration wanted to do their own review to make sure that they come up with a policy that works for them and for the students and for the teachers. So there is no policy that has been fixed on that yet. That's why it was tabled.
And just to be clear, but you're, you're saying, you're talking about adding language into the policy specifically, right? Is that what you're saying? Remember, you have a regulation piece, so regulation, if, if we were to even consider doing that, that would should be part of the regulation, not the policy. The, the, the policy, remember, we have to look at, yeah, we have to look at policies as, you know, legal binding documents. The attorney is, would say no to that because now you're putting, we're putting ourselves in a position with that language. If it doesn't happen, guess what?
Exactly.
We're called on the carpet for it and we're in trouble now because we didn't follow a policy. Less language in policies is what the attorneys are, are always recommending.
And the attorneys are recommending language that they.
They utilize because they can then protect us.
Then they can defend us in court.
And that's what they, that's just the, the, the legal side of, of, you know, policy. There's handbooks as well and practices that, you know, we could always be looking at, kind of to speak to what you're talking about. Yeah, yup.
Wherever you do it. It just been trying to emphasize the fact that.
Understood.
Concern, whenever we do something.
Have that.
The witness test, how does this promote the academic growth and development of students?
Yeah.
And that makes the question is, what do we mean as a district by academic growth and development or so?
Yeah, always asking that question.
Trying to continually push that idea.
Definitely, yup. I, I agree with you. Um, and yup, you definitely, yup.
Any other comments on the suggested deletion policies? Okay, so that's our, starts our thirty day reading.
And we're gonna come to you with every series now. So we've got the two thousand, three thousand, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine to bring forward. So we've got a lot, we're in the five and six thousand series are very large.
I would just like to publicly thank the policy committee.
Yeah.
This is a tremendous amount of work and it is not easy at all. So, thank you so much.
We did a lot of work last evening.
Well, it's definitely.
All right, Mr. Newton.
Uh, reports. Yes, um, we wanted to bring forward some D E I uh information and updates as we talked about trying to continue as board, uh, board meetings to talk about those. So at the elementary level, um, since their last subcommittee meeting, uh, the elementary subcommittee meeting, they've been working on anti bias and discussing anti bias action protocols. Uh, so they had a situation where an incident, you know, at one of the elementary schools where a student had used a racist word. Um, so the committee was working through that, uh, and how best to intervene, support. Uh, so they had discussions about it and there's where that get came up of anti bias, you know, action protocol. So that's something that uh they're planning, they're splitting up in, in the break, they, they did, they split up into breakout rooms by prekated two and three to four in their last meeting and discussed uh some of the standards associated with learning for justice and social justice standards. So they're engaging in some of that work and that's part of the, uh, the essence of these committees uh to be doing just that. They were talking about the March P D uh in wanting to engage and we're already in works on some D E I professional development for our March eleventh, I think it is, yeah, March eleventh, professional development day for staff. Um, they talked about monthly diversity topics, uh, engaging, you know, more with, uh, with parents as well. And um that was about, uh, about the work that from their last, uh, the last meeting. And they've got kind of a template here too, uh, anti bias action steps that they were working on. So the student behavior, anti bias action steps, and then the teacher action steps associated with that too. So they're working on a flow chart um as well. So uh they're doing some good, uh, some good work at the elementary, at the middle school. From their last uh meeting, they've uh restructured membership to recruit members able to commit to meeting times and identified work uh for the year. Um, they, they've solidified six students uh for participation on uh, on the committee. Uh, which is good to see that many, a higher number of students being part of that. Um, identified uh focus areas, ongoing focus areas for the year, addressing student mental health, making all students feel welcome, developing that culture and how they religious calendar, um, inclusive of cultures represented in the building. So specific to the middle school building itself, uh, discussing potential parent, parent involvement on the D E I committee. So they reached out about the idea of starting to include parents at the middle school level, no, not for the district by committee, but for the school based committee. Um, continuing to work with monthly bulletin boards, highlighting cultural celebrations, uh, topics, uh, creating questionnaire to help develop faculty staff awareness on issues of gender identity and pronoun use. And then ongoing conversations at a best use advisory to allow for students with similar cultural, religious and ethnic interests to meet and speak about their personal experiences at, at Ellen. So that's uh an update on the work of middle school, school based committees. Um, and then at the high school, they their, the committee talked about the uh public arts for racial justice, sister mural project. Uh, we're still waiting in each line as to the location of where that mural is gonna go. We have staff and students waiting in the wings to kind of help out with that. And we've already had some Norwich mural, um, which I think. Waiting in the wings to kind of help out with that and we've already had Norwich mural, which I think is done, I don't know.
It was just revealed.
Yeah, so we're still waiting for a location in. I think the Board of Selectmen, I don't know if they, they created a separate committee or I know they're having conversations. That's the, yeah, Public Art for Racial Justice Education. Office of Board of Selectmen. Groups at the town level.
I had asked the space here they were looking at.
Yeah, they haven't identified, to my knowledge, they've not identified it. Committee members, the high school team, administration working with an ad hoc student DEI group. And they're planning that schoolwide assembly led by students, it was supposed to happen in January, but with COVID and increase in, you know, cases and so forth. They pushed that off, so that is occurring, now it's rescheduled for February first, so half of the student. While the other half of the student body will experience an advisory lesson created by faculty members and then they'll, they'll flip. Yep, student members of the GSA club. They presented at a faculty meeting in November, I'm dealing with gender identity issues in the classroom. And then student members of the cultural awareness club, led by one of our teacher reps presented at the faculty meeting in January. On how to handle microaggressions in the classroom. And then the, the E I committee is working to identify a teacher volunteer willing to. Work with learn on an inter-district grant, touch the feature, teach, is to recruit twelve to fifteen high school students. As part of this, this grant component, so I gotta dig a little bit more on, on that, but yeah, that's, that's exciting. So hopefully they'll identify a staff member that would want to, to jump on that. So, um, just to kind of give a synopsis of where the school based committees are at this time. And then, I know she's not here sitting with us, but Melissa DiLoreto, who's out there on Zoom world. You saw, you saw my, my note, she is retiring at the end of this year, so we're gonna. We're gonna miss Melissa and we're back on site Melissa, we can kind of recognize you a little bit more formally, but. We're truly gonna miss, you know, all of the great works, she announced to her, her staff and, you know. The admin team and parents and so we'll, we'll do some more celebrating with Melissa and all the work and effort that she's put in. Over the years and we'll start that process up at the end of this month, which is right around the corner. On hiring or, you know, getting a committee together for the hiring of a new. Teacher or principal, sorry, Stars to Stand, I had reached back out last time. Mrs. Swan was here with some of the committee members. Teaching in a contract, we had pushed out and I put it in one of my updates recently, questions that we had about the. Terms of what that might look like, to date I've not heard back from Mrs. Swan, so hopefully we'll hear back soon. We wanted that information before setting up the next meeting, so we had something to move to the table that we could talk through. So we're still waiting for that information, so hopefully we'll get that soon and we can engage in Stars to Stand and. That's, that's pretty much it.
So I would just piggyback onto Jeff's report on equity and let the group know that we had Tony Ferriola who. Is a colleague of mine from many, many years ago who works to support schools and supporting transgender youth in. In the classroom and creating a safe and nurturing environment. So he presented to our elementary school faculty on last Thursday morning. And then also presented to the admin in the afternoon and he'll be back on the March eleventh day to offer additional trainings. To middle and high school teachers as well as to do some. Alternative trainings, trainings for our life skills and health teachers, kind of talking about some of those topics in the classroom. And navigating some of those really challenging conversations at times, so. That was, that was a great opportunity for us to come together and talk about that as a group and calibrate our practices around that. I had some great, really powerful kickoff, curriculum kickoff meetings with middle school and high school E L A departments, so it sort of. Marked the beginning of implementing their curriculum action plan, which was really exciting, got some really great feedback. Feel like there's so much to do and not enough time, but, you know, we'll continue just to chip back, chip away at it and I will say that the fellows. And the instructional leaders have been really fabulous and co-facilitating that work alongside with me. Starting to do some assessment, the Connecticut State Department, you know, standardized assessment planning meetings, so those meetings are happening this week with. The middle school and elementary schools, I believe high schools next week, so those are on the agenda, we'll start talking about implementation plans, timelines, testing windows. And ensuring that our technology is ready to go for that implementation. And lastly, we've been looking at the school calendar, I'll bring that to PDEC on Thursday for them to give a, give a look and get some feedback from them and. Bring it to the board sometime soon after that.
Yeah, February, we'll bring the full district calendar for next year. For approval, review and approval.
Marianna.
So obviously working on the budget, working on, on year end projections for this year. Some expenses for next year and the biggest thing is we just rolled out, excited about the time and attendance for the parents, which was the biggest rollout. So I'm gonna have them using it for probably two weeks, two, two pay periods worth and then once they're. Kind of phased in, I'm gonna pretty much roll it out and food services is on as well, so. We will slowly, slowly take these steps, but we will finally, I anticipate within the next couple of months. Being a fully integrated electronic timekeeping except for a few, you know. Kind of sheets of people that might still have paper, but really all.
How long that works, Mary?
How long that work? So they've been using it, the secretaries and the students have been using it since May. It's through frontline, which is our access management system, they have a timekeeping system and basically they just take their badges. And swipe in, swipe out, you know, they set up, it's worked with. Creating a file so that it integrates with our payroll system, so the time rather than our payroll person having to key in every one of the hours. It's just imported in and calculates into the, you know, our, our payroll system. And, you know, obviously there's just a few checks and balances that we have to deal with the first few months. First few pay periods, you know, we'll, we'll probably just kind of look at both the old way and the new way just to make sure about. You know, it's, it's been working great for the secretaries. Like I said, we'll have, we'll have them, we'll still have them there. For, you know, some subs and things right now that I'm not, you know, I'm not worried about those right now, I just wanna get all of our full time and part time holiday.
Bill, AAA meeting.
Yep, we had three items on our agenda, we were only able to get to two of them. We had a presentation by one of our. Preschool programs, the Nova and Supernova program and. The presentation had covered surveying some of the families to see whether they were. Wanted to expand the program, it looks like. Generally the data pushed to that direction, they were looking to expand it to four days. They had worked some numbers in terms of making sure that it would continue to pay for itself and they had. Numbers in place, roughly fourteen to twenty as a max to pay for the cost of these additional hours, they would need that many students. And then for the younger program, I guess they needed a minimum of eight in order to do the expansion they were talking about, which. Equates to one more teacher and one more aide and. And they were looking to change the way the fee structures from a daily fee to, and I missed that, it was gonna go to yearly or semester. How would that?
It would be a yearly fee charged monthly, that's more in alignment to some of the other.
So that's, that was, I don't know if I, that I missed anything on that piece. The other topic that we discussed was really just taking a look at the numbers again for out of pocket costs for. Clubs and activities and athletics and what we saw is. The, the numbers are the same as they were the last time we looked at this, which was a broad range from. You know, under a hundred dollars for, for some things to several thousand dollars, you know, if you're a. Gymnast or a hockey player or something like that. Where, there was a, we put a request in to see what, what is the total cost of this? In other words, what are our families playing if we total up all of the fees through all of the sports programs? And, you know, could we potentially reduce that or, you know, what would be the total number if we were to eliminate it? And then we also want to maybe put something more formal in place for assistance program. And make it across the board so that if a student did wanna be a gymnast or whatever and their family couldn't afford it, that, how do we make sure that that can happen? So that's what we discussed there, the item that got tabled for our next meeting was elementary school homework. Which is not gonna be phased in until, till next year as I understand it. And we ran out of time to discuss it at that meeting, we're looking to maybe reschedule. Soon, as soon as we can to, to talk about the homework guidelines.
I have a question because you're saying that it was from a few dollars to several thousand, I've seen the highest amount on this thing.
The document that got included in board docs did not include both, the, the high school. That's just the middle school document, the high school document, which includes the high school sports programs, you'll see that gymnastics is. A few thousand, hockey I think was three thousand, you know, baseball was pushing a thousand depending on what. What position you played, so there, there were, there were, lacrosse was up there. Yeah, there's, there are. A few that are, you know, over a thousand dollars to play.
Can we have Jackie go and upload that? For some reason, just the middle school spreadsheet got uploaded after that.
I saw that, so I figured that was all you guys were talking about. No, that's okay, I couldn't get to the meeting anyway.
I think to your point, Bill, I think there needs to be more equity for. Everything across the board. I know some things are more expensive, but.
Well, we, we.
Cause I know like for instance, the marching band is out there collecting cans, you know, recycled bottles. The first and third Saturday.
Right, right, I mean, there's, there, there are a lot of different things going on and well, last time we looked at it, we, we. And, and the, the overall. You know, if, if we total up these numbers, I think we're, we're not gonna be in a position to, to certainly wipe out. The costs and, and it's, it's, it's a tough thing because the, the parents, nobody wants the, a program to go away because. Just because it's an expensive program, so they, they're found ways to make it work, whether it's selling fruit or collecting cans or. Car washes, et cetera. So there's all kinds of different booster clubs and stuff out there. It, I think, you know, we, it would be nice to look at all those numbers, try to potentially reduce some. And, and figure out whether, you know, there's a way to do an assistance program or something that, so that it's, that it can be accessible for everybody.
I agree, I think, I think the assistance program is a really good idea, but I also think equity across the board is a really good idea too. Trying to figure out how to level the playing field so everybody could participate in this.
Yes, I think that the idea of an assistance program is fantastic, Bill. I do want to ask a question on the elementary homework. Has the district taken feedback from elementary school parents to take it to consideration and? Have that available at community?
As I mentioned, that one, we didn't really get a chance to discuss yet, so. I, I don't really know all the details yet, I do know that. We are gonna be receiving some information to review because it's an anticipated. Big topic and we, we've got a lot of information to look at before we.
Can I just ask how, how did you? Retrieve information from here, so you put out a survey of some kind?
Then wrote a letter introducing them to the draft guidelines. And letting them know that teachers do have the opportunity to kind of pilot some of the practices this year as a pilot. So that if they see some changes to just be aware of that. And also in that link was a, in that letter was a link to provide feedback. And one of the, you know, the questions is an open ended question where really they couldn't write anything. And we had fourteen respondents at this.
I was gonna say, I'm guilty of reading it and not clicking on the links.
I mean, I don't have a number off the top of my head, but it's all elementary.
Yes, so eight, eight hundred, well, students.
Fourteen out of eight hundred.
Was really small.
I have to say, I read it, I just didn't.
Was input taken from the parent council?
Yeah, well, yes, input has been taken and it's been being considered in terms of. Additional resources that will be available to families, for those family, I think, you know, ultimately. The overwhelming response in the fourteen that we got was thank you, you know.
The fourteen from the parent council, but then how much? So you only got fourteen responses from that survey? It might be behoove to send it for again. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna put that one out there, that or, you know, is the link on the website for accessibility? That kind of stuff.
Are you hearing it?
I am, that's why I'm asking improving question. I just wanted to add one more thing was on the supernovas, you know, supernova has an incredible program. So to hear that they are going to possibly expand is like a double thumbs up from myself, but. I know that it is a loved program, the waitlist is usually quite long. So it would be who to expand it and then it would additionally pay for itself. Depending upon the tuition.
I'm gonna say, I just had asked for. That topic on the pay, how much do parents pay? Only because at budget time, it becomes a hot topic on getting rid of athletics and doing pay for play. So I, we had been working on it a while ago and COVID kind of sucked that out of us. So I wanted it to just come back. At budget time, so when people ask us to stop paying for athletics, we can show them that. We pay for athletics plus parents already play, pay the significant amount already, so that was.
Actually, that might be interesting to, to, you know, I didn't think about that part of it, but if, if you do total up those numbers and say. You know, to, as we're presenting, we're, we are not paying three hundred thousand dollars in. Other sports costs that we could be.
That's why I brought it up, so that it could be there for that time when the public comes and tells us we should stop paying for athletics and switch over to pay for play.
You might be able to utilize that information also because that was recently done, that we pulled, like we did an audit.
Yeah, yeah, it was the same one, we recycle, we just hadn't totaled the numbers to, to say, okay, there's fifteen hockey players.
I wanted to add band and stuff too, because it wasn't, band wasn't on there the last time we did it.
It's on there now.
Every single club is.
Yeah, just because that we are always told to cut sports, cut activities and do pay for play. But that comes at a bigger cost than people realize because parents are already putting out a thousand dollars per sport on their own. And then you add in a fee, that's.
Volunteering too, I mean, there's, right, I mean, parents, quite a few parents.
Volunteering too. I mean, there's vol, right? I mean, parents, quite a few parents actually are.
And fundraiser.
Fundraisers. All right. Um, FFO has minutes in there, uh, policy has minutes in there to review board comments. Anyone have a board comment? Barry?
We opened that comment earlier about, we can see it came up uh, earlier. As I, kind of look at like where we're going and I'm really convinced that uh, the pandemic is going to come back again. And uh, we have to be prepared for it. And as we're looking, I looked at like what, what worked. You know, we looked at the things that didn't work during the pandemic, but there were some gems in which uh, we had occasions where we had students who had the capacity to initiate and sustainable learning. Were working with teachers who created environments that encouraged and allowed them to do so. There were many successes and, and that's the kind of uh, nugget that I think we should be working more on. And we're gonna go into the future. One of the things that we fell down on during the pandemic among the technologies was the fact that the students were used to being taught. They were used to sitting there and basically receiving information. Uh, and trying to transfer that model into a um, mode of environment, but I'll just, in most cases, it didn't work. So we have to be prepared to, that's why I bring back that comment of to what end? What are we trying to develop from our students in terms of their capacity for academic and cognitive growth? You know, and if we could get that idea about what we're trying to sustain, then everything we're doing can push towards that end. And if we can develop that with a pandemic hits again, we have to go through um generations we did before, we're gonna have students in place who have the capacity to uh, adapt and flex and uh, work well within that environment that we didn't have this time. But I, there's a great urgency, my mind to get there. You know, we can't, we have to keep that as a goal, we have to keep that in mind and we cannot slink back the fact of, well, we're gonna do everything we did in the past, we're gonna keep doing that the same because we have this um, difficulty facing us in the near future.
Anyone else have any board comments? All right, future agenda items. Uh, personnel notices and. A discussion. Everybody. Thank you, everyone. Just great job.